Name of the new hip roof over existing entry vestibule. Do we have anybody to speak to this project? Please come up and tell us who you are and.
So I'm Tom Westrick. My wife Sharon and I own and live at 29 Magnolia Drive. And currently over our entryway of Portico's is a flat roof. And we essentially would like to put a hip roof on it over the existing structure, not coming out any further. So I have pictures if you need to see what it would probably look like, but.
Um, yeah, can you, can you?
Sure.
Show us.
I know, I'm getting.
Anybody live on Euclid? No, okay.
Yeah, I have to say I like the design and. Tempted to our.
All right.
Oh, for.
Yep.
So essentially it would look something similar to that.
Do you have a picture of what it looks like now?
The existing one?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. So use the mouse or the pad. I think he's got it in here, maybe he doesn't. May I have that? How do I scroll it down?
I see it.
Yeah, that's it.
Uh, and the new roofing material is going to match the upper roof?
That's our intention. We've talked to roofers with being able to find the same terracotta top tiles to put on there.
Nice.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question for John. What is the, what was the TRR B review, right? There's no site plan associated with this, right?
Because of the change of exterior.
So just, okay.
We, we had to get a variance because it's not 25 feet from the front.
Oh, but that's a, okay, okay.
So they were extending and unperforming by going up what they have.
Got it.
Any other issues we should know about? Valerie, anything?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Uh, any members of the board have any questions?
I don't.
That looks good. Okay, um, Valerie, you want to read this question?
Sure. Whereas the applicant is seeking AHRB approval to install hip roof over the existing flat roof. Uh, the property is located 29 Magnolia Drive. Now for therefore be it resolved, the AHRB of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasoning step forth below, the application for architectural and historic review approval is granted, subject to the following conditions. And it refers to the plans that dated June 13th, 2025.
I make the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Nice work.
Uh, the next item on agenda is 111 LaFergie Avenue. Valerie, would you tell us why we're here, this item?
Yeah, so we just need a very, um, we just need the board to reaffirm the seeker determination. You gave this, this particular project a negative declaration. The project has already been approved. They went to seek, um, their Department of Health approvals. The Department of Health approvals wanted to have basically a resolution up to date. That basically reaffirms your, the seeker determination. They said that seeker expired, but seeker really doesn't expire, but they would like to have an updated resolution. So for the applicant, we're asking you just to, uh, vote to reaffirm the original negative declaration.
Okay, there's no resolution, huh?
No, no. So just if you can just.
I move that reaffirm is seeker for this project?
Right.
No changes.
No changes. There's, it's just the seeker determination.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll work with the building department to see if they need to like something that's a little bit more of a resolution. I'll hand it to them, but basically that's all it is.
Okay, great. All set. Um. Okay, next item on the agenda is 200 Ashford Avenue. Is there anyone to speak to this?
Good evening, my name is Elvis Moran with Fidali Engineering. I'm here to represent the applicant. Okay, so we were previously here, um, due to, um, a survey that was needed. Since then, we have, um. Since then, we have an updated survey. Also, one of the main questions was that, um, was the stormwater design. Which we have. Which we have since designed. It was mainly for runoff due to the, the site conditions over there. We did do a percolation test. But, um, due to the site conditions and the property not being connected to any sort of lines there, we did the most feasible option, which would be, um, providing the Coltechs on the site. Uh, which we have four of them. So, um, right here, proposing four. This would be like, this would be the most feasible option, um, for this site particular.
Have you seen the engineering memo with, uh, the items that need to be addressed?
Yes, we did. We saw a new memo come in, um, a couple of days ago. We are addressing them, we're getting an updated survey to provide contours. Also, um, do believe we answered some of them, but we'll give more clarification on, onto our plans and our, um, narrative.
Okay, Anthony, do you want to address any particular issues in your memo that they should specifically address?
No, I would just say, um, I think what's important here is you, you provide a grading plan, proposed grading. You just, what you have right now are just, um, you're showing direction of flow and arrows. Cause part of the problem was I wasn't sure the, uh, that the inverts and the rim elevations of the, of the drain inlets are really going to work. They seem to be below some of the elevations on your Coltech systems. I think you gotta look carefully at that, that that's going to work. And if you want, we could, we could have a separate, you know, meeting on this, if you want to go over this. Make sure you, you know, it's, it's correct. And I wasn't clear if you were directing the, uh, existing building into that system at all?
No, we did not take that into consideration.
Maybe clarify that. And, uh, yeah, but that was the, the crux of it. We've got to see that grading and that, you know, cause right now the way it's drawn, uh, the, the system's going to surcharge on that. A drywall will never fill up. It'll, it'll just come out the grates. The lower grates are the lowest point, it seems to me.
And, uh, just to reiterate, um, we have to design or we should design for the building itself as well?
No, the building's existing. I just wasn't clear if it was included in your calculations. It almost looked like it was.
Right.
You know, so if it is, it's, it's, uh, you gotta account for that, you know? But if that, that goes to existing drainage, it can continue going to that point.
Right.
You know, um, as long as it's not like discharging to a liter, let's say, onto the, uh, pavement in the back or something, and it's going to get into that system. So you just have to take a look at that.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. I move that we open the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here would like to speak to this application?
Good evening, planning board. Hi, my name is Donna Cassell. I'm at Seven Ogden Place. I'm the property directly south of this application. You know, I think they're doing, you know, they're really trying to do a good job there, which I'm very happy about. One thing I did in, in looking over this application, cause one thing that really concerns me, being the neighboring property, is the landscaping and what it's going to look like. And I see they have a landscaping plan, but I don't see, um, I don't see an actual plan of how many shrubs are there going to be? Where they're going to be placed, where the evergreen trees are going to be placed, that sort of thing. And I know that unless it's in the site plan, it doesn't exist. So I'd be looking for, um, something that actually shows what the landscaping is, is going to look like. You know, and where the different shrubs will be. That's, okay, thank you, thank you.
May I, may I answer that?
Sure.
It could be that previously we weren't presenting it, but, um, we are, um, providing some planting, American boxwood and green iris. But they're right around the corner. We don't want overgrown shrub. Overgrown shrubbery on the neighboring site. We're also providing decorative fencing, so it can look appealing to the neighborhood.
Maybe you could point out on the plan there where some of the different types of vegetation is.
Sure. So right now we have, um, American boxwoods here. And then we have flowers, seasonal flower plants around the, the front of the property, um, on Ashford.
What about at the back of the new park?
Over here, we are not showing, um, any, um, plants besides, uh, grass.
That's the concern.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think Donna's speaking from experience. I think you need to submit a plan where you call out what you're going to plant where. And I think the most, you know, cause I know we spent a lot of time trying to rearrange the parking to create that kind of green area, which is great. I really appreciate what you did. But those two edges are the places where, you know, there'd be rows of some kind of evergreen, probably or something. I'm not a landscape architect, but I agree with Donna that you need to show a plan where you call out the size and species of the plants that you're gonna, um, put on the site.
Right. We, we can definitely provide that. I'm sure the applicant will be more than happy to.
Yeah, and that's, it shouldn't be a big deal.
The green area is, is actual live grass?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So green, I didn't.
Well, and, and in this photograph it shows what might be astroturf, but I think it's grass.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the goal was to screen the parking area for the neighbors. So if you could design that with that in mind, that would be, uh, goal.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, anyone else like to speak to this application? Okay, um, are you clear about what you need to do for the next meeting?
Yes, uh, we're getting an updated survey and then we, they received the memo, we go, we did go through it, so, or ready to respond.
Okay, so you're going to coordinate with Anthony and, uh, and work through the landscape plan?
I also recommend just re, a resubmission of the entire, like, of your entire packet next time, as opposed to just individual sheets, so that way we can look at everything again.
That's a good idea.
Sorry, by, by entire package, just do you mean?
All, all, all site plans, like all the sheets in your.
Your full set.
Yeah, your full set. We, we submitted all site plans. Should be in the.
But in.
Right, but you're revising.
Right, and the next submission, just resubmit every.
Got it.
Okay, then I move that we continue this, uh, application to the next meeting. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda, 33 Main Street, has been adjourned until the October 9th meeting? Is it October 9th and not October 2nd?
I gotta check the bill.
Columbus Day? No, I think it is a holiday.
Yom Kippur.
Oh, okay, so we're, we're.
It's the 2nd, uh, it's the 9th because of the holiday on the 2nd.
Sunday.
Got it. Um, the next item on the agenda, 19 Livingston Avenue. Continuation of pre-submission conference for site plan approval, proposed nine-unit cluster development.
Good evening. I'm Christina Griffin. I'm, uh, principal of CGA Studio Architects. And, um, I'm also here with Vic Sariqio, one of the partners of Livingston Development Group. And also Adam Sokolik, who is also a partner. Adam would like to speak after I speak. Today, we don't have new material for you, but we wanted to give you, uh, we wanted to talk to you about the background of this project, to just give you some more information. I know we're meeting on, uh, the Sunday at the site and we're really happy that Sarah and, um, Dan Roman was able to set that up. So today I just wanted to show you a few images and talk to you about how we arrived at the design that we have. It's submitted to you. I'm just going to open up the door in just a second. I'm just putting this image up first because. Sometimes a, the 3D says a lot about a project. And when, um, this group came to me, and they're people who have been living in this area for a long time. They had already been through a long process. I think they bought the property in 2012, 13 years ago. And, um, there was a very different design that they had. They put in front of the planning board, AHRB. It was, um, a long building that was parallel to the street. And they did not get approval, but they were asked to look at a project where you would see the units as almost like individual houses. And rather than having one big building, which they thought was dis, too dissimilar to the other buildings on the street, that we would look at, um, having, uh, breaking up the building and then having multiple views, not just one view through the site. So following that, um, those comments, years later, they brought me onto the, onto the project, a different architect. I took a fresh view of the project. And I developed this scheme where the townhouses are two and a half stories. They have gable roofs, similar to the gables that you see on the street. They're a little more modern, they're more modern and stuff. But they have very similar massing in height and scale to some of the smaller houses in the area. Livingston Avenue actually has some variety of houses. I've worked on five properties on the streets. I know it really well. I designed three houses. One is a five-family house that's next door, 29 Livingston. Next to that, two-family house across the street, two-family house. And then not far from those houses are some very big, beautiful homes that have been restored recently. And also, I guess, in kind of interspersed between all the bigger homes are some smaller homes that are sort of raised ranches. And they're all different, from all different time periods. So going back, I'm just going to flip back now to our site plan to give you an idea of, um, how this was laid out. Paul Petreti couldn't be here tonight. He's not, he's not feeling well, but he did this slide for me tonight so that, um, we could maybe give you a better look at how we laid out the units on the site. And I'm going to blow that up as much as I can. See if I can get this even bigger. The idea of this plan, it's a little bigger than the other plan. It just shows a lot of the other buildings in the neighborhood. I don't know if you can see it from so far away, though. Sorry. Let's see if there's another way to blow this up. Okay. Okay, the purpose of this plan is just to show view corridors, not just the layout of this site, but just some of the buildings that are in the area. There's quite a variety, you know, this Cabrini on the south side. And then to the right, there's a five, um, multi-family building, five-unit multi-family building, two, two-family building. I don't know if you can see my cursor. And then the Ginsberg Development, which is, um, you know, bigger, much bigger buildings. And then the, well, it's cut off with the bigger houses down the road. Across the street, we have smaller homes that are, I think mostly single-family. And then of, uh, across from the, on Broadway, not far away, is also a development. It might be 30 or more years old, Washington Arms, that has townhouses. And, um, and I'm showing this to you to show the relationship of these buildings to the roads and how they work. They, most of them line up with the street, but there are exceptions. There's a house across the street that doesn't, that's not far. And the townhouses over here, you'll see there's some places where, um, the shape of the, of the townhouses are staggered. And, and, uh, sometimes they're staggered because they've, they sort of fit the angle of the street. Over here we have it and over here we have it. So the main reason why we have this staggered shape is really because we wanted to maximize the view through the site. And when you look at the geometry of the site, not, you know, I'm just pointing out that it happens in other areas, especially when you have a curve in, in the road. And you can see this in many different projects. I worked on a house in Hastings, built 1815, that was not, well, sometimes houses really all don't, don't align with the, with the street. So, you know, I do appreciate and understand why that would be important. But in this case, in order to get this view, let me see if I can go back to our site. In order to get the views that we were looking for, in maximizing the views, we decided on a, uh, a two-story townhouse unit, um, that has about a thousand square feet per floor. It's, they're fairly modest in size. They, they go up to 3,000 square feet because we get a little additional area for the half-story at the third floor and then a basement, finished basement. But essentially, uh, each story, each floor is a thousand square feet. And it's a three-bedroom, uh, two bath on the second floor. And on the first floor, there's home office study. And all the living rooms face the back, which is where the view is. And once we chose our, uh, unit type, which is 23 feet wide by 46 feet deep, we decided to see how that might work. The idea of townhouses as well, we also really needed to figure out how this is going to comply with the Dobbs Ferry zoning code. And I know there's a lot of fluctuation over the years, but, um, about three years ago, when I started working on this, we found that their cluster development code seemed to be the best code. I mean, be, be, um, something that would really fit what we're trying to do here, having the individual townhomes. And, uh, the idea of the cluster development is that you have, part of the property is open and, uh, sort of, um, protected open land. And then you put the, uh, buildings towards the side of the property, which is, um, where we would like to develop and, and not need to, to save that, uh, steep slopes and area that we have in the back. And this happens because, of course, it's a very difficult site. And I've worked very closely with the civil engineer to say, and he came up with, um, this idea of creating this, um, elevated platform for the townhouses and, um, having all the cars tucked into, into the back of the, uh, townhouses, so they wouldn't be visible from the street. So you go down the driveway. By the way, the driveway is shared with the building next door, 29 Livingston. Uh, one side of it is. And this driveway enters our parking area that gives us a 40-foot turnaround for a fire truck, which is very important, just for safety and to get access for the fire trucks to the units in the back. So this also happens to be the area of the site where we have a lot of fill. It's very steep and it's very expensive to develop. And we want to stay away from that. There is, um, unstable fill that needs to be taken out of the site. And we need to take it out and hopefully we can recycle it and bring it back as well. It's more suitable for a building on. But, you know, it's, uh, it's in this area and it's, um, easier to do a parking area and then to have a building on that. And then right behind it is a very steep site here. And, um, the, uh, Paul Petreti has designed these two retaining walls that break up the, um, the big step in grade. And, um, those retaining walls mostly are hidden underground with only, uh, like 10 feet visible above, uh, grade. I think one is 10 and one is only four. And that, this area we feel is just not even, can't be developed on, couldn't be used. And, uh, it's going to be set aside to be protected and, uh, not to be, uh, it probably couldn't be ac, couldn't be safely accessed because it's such an extreme sto, uh, steeply stoked, sloped area. So the view corridors that we have, when we put our buildings together, and the goal was to group them into sets of two or three, we ended up, of course, with a natural view corridor that's about 36 feet wide on the right. And that is really between the building on the right and our, our first townhouse on the left. And then between the two sets of three townhouses, we have 18 feet. And then on the south side, we have, um, about 22 feet. And then it opens up because of the, the triangular shape of the site here. So, uh, the view platform, uh, description in the Dobbs Ferry zoning code says, uh, there is a, a view platform map. And there is a location right here where Livingston Avenue meets Broadway. Where it's tagged as a place where we need to create a view platform. But there's also a lot of language in the code that says that we're required to create, uh, view platforms, which is a location where you can take in the view and view corridors through the site. It's not clear how many and where and how big. But, uh, in this, this scheme, these, this is, these are the view corridors we've created. And also want to mention that the reason why we have, uh, nine units is, um, we feel that this really makes it, um, kind of financially viable, because there's a tremendous cost that will go into creating all these retaining walls, wrapping around the elevated platform for the, uh, townhouse. for the townhouse development. We had started with eight units when I entered the project, and we added one night, one more for the affordable unit. We found that in order to make it work economically, we had to add a unit rather than take one of the eight. So, I think a few, when I started, we, we had eight. We went in front of the BOT to see if they'd make any exemptions. And that wasn't the case, so we just simply added one more, which is this one here. So, one, you look at the shape of this site, by the way. You know, you have, we have the units hugging the set, hugging pretty much the driveway on the right and the setbacks on the left. You end up, and if you want to make sure this view corridor goes straight through the site so that you don't look through that corridor and see the other, sorry, buildings behind. Sorry, let me get back to this. We ended, we decided we had to line up the three in the front with the three in the back. Also, we did take, and they also, the ones, they're all lined up really parallel. So the long side is parallel to the side, very long side property lines. If, we have done studies to turn these in, in different ways, parallel to the street. But once you turn the angle of these townhouses, you, you can't get this view corridor. It just closes it in because the geometry is such that you, when you turn them, you end up with the long part of that townhouse angling into that corridor, and it reduces it. So that's why we kept the shape. And the staggered effect helps to make the houses look like individual units. But it also is something that we, it is an exception to the rule. But we have a bend in the, the road here, and we have, you know, I have come across it. I actually live right next to a whole neighborhood. All the houses are, are not parallel street, and that's because they're all parallelograms, just like this. Where you have, the angle of the street is, is not ninety degrees to the property line on the sides. So I just wanted to explain the history behind the, how we came up with this, this layout. And I think I have another slide, I suppose, so you can see how we came up with these view platforms. I've turned the slides, so I don't know if you can follow it. But, let me turn this, bring this down. So the idea is that in at least three, three, maybe four places on the sidewalk, you can look through the site and see the Palisades and the river. And then going back, rather than going through all our plans, and which I, I just want to mention, you know, the, the civil engineering drawings are highly developed. And I spoke to Paul today, and he said they are really that, he brought it to that level because, just to make sure everything was feasible. And a lot of, there was a lot of review and discussion with the village engineer, Anthony Oliveri, and Valerie Manostra, the village planner we met with, and Dan Romer multiple times. And even though we submitted the drawings for this scheme December twenty twenty-four, we just came to your board last month because of the review process we did with the village consultants and Dan, and also John Stone, and, you know, looking very carefully at the plans because they felt that this needs to really be worked out. We need to show compliance. It's fully compliant with the zoning regulations, with the cluster development code. And that if we could, we need to prove that, and we need to get all the drawings together, especially the engineering should work out. And I think Paul just felt that he wanted to make sure it was a, really developed so that he understood how all the retaining walls worked. We also looked at sky exposure diagrams, and we needed to locate the elevations at the edge of the property and at the edge of the new houses, so there is a topographic layout for that. Any case, I wanted to also explain, by the way, just in case you'd like to know, last time I showed these retaining walls, and, and the reason why they're here is because the owner, Vic Cericchio, built these. And, you know, there are, this is a group that's well experienced and prepared to do a difficult site like this. So just going quickly through the same drawings before, these are our, I just want to mention, these are the townhouse layouts that have all the windows located in them. The reason for that, because, you know, you mentioned these are very rough drawings. But we have been through, this is the same, very, we had schematic plans three years ago. And then the, probably the site plan was developed, maybe starting three years ago. And then we added more detail because, and we have our affordable housing calculations. Adding the amount of detail that we have with all the window sizes in place enables us, and we have, you know, beginning of a color scheme, was enabled our renderer we work with, who does really accurate rendering. And if we don't have that level of detail, they get, they're too rough and they're not in scale. So we really want to see how this looks, and we can, we can come back with different views to show you how that looks next to the other buildings on the street. I just want to show this one today because, you know, it, I was, I feel the, there's such a huge benefit to getting these views in between buildings and getting the look of these individual houses, having this laid out the way it is. And this, this rendering shows, yes, it's a view corridor. And, you know, it's wider than the one at the project down the street. But it is a corridor that people would see if they're walking, you know, along the sidewalk. The town, these views are showing the houses. And, and this is something we've worked hard on because every time we go to a planning board, they always wonder how accurate is the rendering? So we want to make sure that rendering does accurately show exactly how it fits on the site. So these are staggered. You can see the staggered here. And, and this is the line of the street. And I happen, I, I can show you other examples, but I happen to feel that, that when you have this exception of houses that are not parallel street, sometimes it's just not such an, it's, it's not such an odd, it's certainly not unattractive to have that shape because it, and I don't, I don't know how important it is because it's not like we're restoring a street wall. But it does help us create these, the sense that each unit is like a, a different house. They're different, each house is a different color. And, you know, we'd be happy to, another thing that really helps with the transition of a street that's not parallel is how you handle the edges and the borders and the, this is, this retaining, this retaining wall here and, and even the, the paths and the landscaping. And, you know, we could come back with a view looking down at this and show you how we might develop the landscaping to help make that transition from the street that's not parallel to the units.
But, this all seems a little premature to us.
Oh, okay. I just wanted the opportunity to explain it, so.
I mean, if you want a few more minutes, we can.
No, I, I just wanted you to know the thought went into it. And I was on vacation and on Zoom last time, so I don't know sure if I was able really to fully explain and just to present the project. And it may be premature, but I just wanted you to know the thought that's been, that went into it so far. And now I think I want to just give the, I would like Adam to have a chance. He also wants to talk to the board about the project.
Guys, hear me okay? My name's Adam Sekolik. I'm one of the partners at Livingston. And I just really wanted to make you guys, make sure you guys understand that this whole project has really been a distillation of almost fourteen years now of ongoing refinement and redesign, and other redesign, and comment and redesign. And, you know, we've taken all those comments, public meetings, private meetings, and that's really the design that you have in front of you right now. It's been thoughtfully designed to comply with the code and to work within the bounds of two well-known, largely discussed criteria and limiting factors on this project, one of which is the site itself, which is no easy site. You guys will see that firsthand, whoever's coming this weekend. And then the other is the view preservation aspect of it, which I know is a big, you know, touching point, touch point in this, this village. And, you know, is, we understand that it's a, a hot topic, and it's part of the code. You know, we, we thoughtfully went through now fourteen years, you know, over a decade of, of, of everything to try to make something that's going to work, and takes everybody's comments and previous applications and to build something that we think, you know, is, is within the bounds of what you guys want. So, you know, those two things, the, the site and the view. On the site, any project that I've ever been involved with, you know, this has to be the most difficult site that, that I have personally been involved with, and I would say most members too. It's, it's no easy task. There's a lot going on. You have steep slopes. You have abandoned structures. You have unstable soil. You have some very complex utility issues to work out. There's no better engineer on the project than Mr. Petretti. He has a multi-decade experience and relationship with this site, predating us, our involvement, going way back to, I think, even early stages of Rudy's, et cetera. You know, it's, it's been a long time for him, and now it's been a long time for us. Like I said, it's been fourteen years now since we were approached by the previous owners and the village, and then encouraged by the village administration to come on board and take on this project. And that's really where we, when we started. So, you know, it would, we're very excited for you guys to come out, take a look at it, see what we're dealing with in person. In terms of the view, you know, the code can be a little ambiguous. It's kind of hard to decipher what's required, you know, what is considered a view platform? Where are view corridors required? How many are required? All those things are, are pretty tough to figure out. So we've used those fourteen years now. You know, I think the, the plan in the town was, was adopted in twenty-ten, shortly before we came on. So it's kind of hard for us to, you know, now come back for another board who may have a different view of what is a view platform or what is a view corridor, how many view corridors are needed. So what we tried to do is use those ten years of experience and the code to develop something and work within the code, the design guidelines, and the site itself, which again, is, is very difficult. The current design that we have now really is the best thing we've put forward. And it's got not only one view corridor, but as many as four, which from what we can tell is multiples of what's required by code for that sensitive site there in the, in the, at the corner of Livingston and Broadway. Appendix E makes it seem like one is required. You know, we potentially could have four, you know, three independent looks through to the river and the Palisades. And again, those, those corridors were developed over time. We constantly and consistently heard from previous boards that they want multiple peaks at the river. They don't want one giant mass. I don't know how familiar you are.
Can you tell me who said that? Because I've never heard that.
It's, it actually goes back to the, before you guys, I think, were one combined board. It was the AHRB.
I mean, this is functionally a new application for us.
I understand that, but what I was going to say was, there has to be some level of consistency from board to board. You guys can't come in as a new board turns over and just impose subjectivity across the board.
It's not subjective. It's in section forty-six of, of the village code that we have to honor the LWRP view sheds. And they're clearly on this.
I read forty-six today, and to me, it seems like it's, it's wide open.
So I think, you know, I think this is right, we're at the very beginning of this process, right? Because there is going to be an LWRP consistency review. So I think, and there needs to be a seeker review, and we haven't even really begun, you know, really diving into the details of the project. I mean, I know the applicant mentioned that there were some meetings. And just for the record, like, we met with the applicant typically, like we've done with other more complex projects, just to make sure the application is complete before it goes before your board. But the application itself is yours to review and may comment on and adjust to the site plan as you see fit. So I think, you know, I think whether, you know, we're ultimately, the board's going to be, once you look at some of the view quarters, you, part of that will be, as part of the seeker analysis, will be a visual analysis, will be looking at visual impact. So I recommend, like, when you go out to the site this weekend, take a look at it. And then the next meeting, we're going to maybe want to identify very specific areas where you want to actually see those view corridors from public right-of-ways. Because that would probably be more helpful to the applicant at this point. So I think, and then we clearly have to start thinking about the seeker process as well and what other additional environmental review you want to do. So that's down the line, but I think for, for the meeting this weekend, I would just almost look at when you're walking along in the public right-of-ways, what areas you want to specifically see viewpoints from.
Now, are the buildings staked out at all? Or the masses or not?
No.
Nothing, okay. Just asking.
And you could probably do some three-D studies. I don't know if you can stick them on a Google Earth.
We have that or something.
We have Google Earth, don't we?
But, I mean, the, it's just common sense. It's a gateway view, and the majority of people go into Dobbs Ferry by car. And there's that view. I mean, you can, you can start in the Battery and drive all the way up Broadway. I'll throw it the wrong way. And you never get a view of the, sort of the grandeur of the Hudson Valley. You've got a few peaks and the onkers from the top of the hill. Then you come around that corner at Livingston, and there it is. You can, you can look out over the Hudson Valley, and it's, it's a gateway view. It's like one of the signature views of Dobbs Ferry.
So, so part of, sorry.
So it makes sense that that would be a view to preserve, if possible.
But how is that not what we're, what we're presenting?
Well, maybe you are. We don't know.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
I'm just saying, you know, just it makes common sense that, you know, in terms of picking the view.
Common sense and what's written in the code aren't necessarily, you know, common sense isn't written in. I mean, when we review the code today, we, we spent considerable time looking at it. How many view corridors are required? The code doesn't say. How wide of a view corridor? The code doesn't say.
Right.
From what viewpoint, standpoint? The, the closest thing to where they want a view corridor or a view platform is Appendix E, which is almost, you can't even read it.
It's not meant, it's not meant to tell somebody exactly.
Then why is it in the code? Like, the code should be a guiding principle.
It is. That's exactly the point. It's a guiding principle, right? The whole reason that there is, if it was what you said, you'd give it to John and Dan, and they'd say, yep, this is the only way it can be. That's not, the reason that there is a discretionary review process is because despite what you're saying, there are fifty ways to do this site. You're showing us one. And what makes me nervous about tonight is not, like, I don't know where we're going to end up. Maybe this will end up being it. But it telegraphs to me, and on this idea that you all think, you figured it out, and you put in all the technical constraints and everything else, this is it. And I'm telling you that I think, and now just speaking for myself, if you, if you think that the way to proceed here is not to present alternatives, then I think it's going to be really, really for a difficult process.
I think that what bothers us as an applicant is that very little consideration seems to go into the already expended time, money, and effort over fourteen years to get to this point.
You understand why that can't be the way we review.
But you understand as an applicant, we're having a board ask us to redesign things to your subjective opinion.
It hasn't, the whole, like, there are a million, wait, there are, I won't say a million. There are ten as-of-right schemes here.
Really?
Yes. More.
You can fit, you can fit, you, Mr. Lane, can fit ten as-of-right on that platform.
It's not, it's not for me to, I'm just telling you, I have been, I've done this for however many years. And when an applicant comes in and they say, this is it, this is the only way it can be, that is never the case. Never. You know it. Come on.
But I think, if you're asking me, I know that, and you also have to admit that you know that you, you do not have the authority to ask us to redesign things.
Yeah, we do.
Is that true? That we don't have the authority to ask that? Hold on. Hold on.
I want to be the designer.
I'm going to have your attorney.
Yeah.
You want to be the designer, Mr. Lane. That's what you're telling me.
I don't want to design it. I want to see alternative site plans for a huge and important site.
I'd love to make a suggestion. I think we can show you the design they had before. It just says another, we can show you that option that they showed to the board years ago, just that.
I don't think.
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't think that's necessary. I think you all need to do some alternative proposals for this site. And I'd like, and maybe Dan can speak to whether or not that's a legitimate request.
And, and the board doesn't design the project. They review what you submit. And that, that review may and often does, more, more often than not, results in changes to the plans, refinement, that, that, it may be something completely different, but that's the review process.
But if he's asking for iteration, please, please.
It's not a matter of me being pleased.
How long have you been before this board?
This board and the Board of Trustees.
Forget about 14, forget about 14 years. How long has this project been before the board?
This project?
Right.
Few months?
Few months.
That's, that's incredible that you've gotten to this point, frankly.
I mean, and the BOT, and by the way, the BOT, this is a place where what we want to do, by the way, you know, like, if you, you were watching the meet, you know, the previous applicants and so on, we love it when a project comes in, we call for public, we love clearing the docket. But the fact of the matter is, this project is a big complicated site. It requires the approval of the AHRB and the planning board, which are now merged, which is great for you and all of us. It requires BOT approval. So, it's not up to me, but it is, you know, it's, it's going to be, there's a process, and other people on the Board of Trustees probably feel very strongly about it. And I'm just telling you, I'm, I'm trying to help you, actually, by telling you that if you want to move forward, the way to do it is to have some alternative ideas for how the site can be laid out.
How detailed?
Not detailed. Actually, I'm, I'm, what concerns me is that Paul Petretti, who I do respect, as an engineer, it has nothing to do with anyone's qualifications here. He's ready to pull a permit. He's got his drawings ready to go. I'm like, what? Where is the sort of concept level exploration of how the site could possibly be laid out? It's, it's like, I don't, like, I was shocked, frankly.
I think we were before, or after last December, right, had conversations. This is not, like, just magically in front of.
It is, but it was magically in front of us.
I understand in front of you guys, but I'm saying it's been, it's been in this building since December. So, it's kind of strange for us now that it is.
So, the.
No, there's no resistance.
There's no resistance. We want to see it happen.
And John can speak to this as well. The, the applications that were coming in were specifically for zoning compliance, right? To figure out if what it is that you're looking to do actually can be done under the zoning. And that's really what the reviews have been.
Right. That's what you spent since December until two months ago, when it came before this board, doing. Had nothing to do with conceptual design.
That's fine.
It had to do with being zoning.
I understand, but it's not like we just magically appeared here today, so.
Correct, but we never.
Yeah, you magically did two months ago.
We are not the ones that look at design. We look at the code. It took us 10 months to get, or however long December, until two months ago, to get it down that it would fit the cluster development code, also fit the zoning code. Now, you can't blame the board for six months working with the building department and the plan.
Basically saying that we just appeared with this, and it's like, falls overdeveloped, even though we're underdeveloped in, in, and that this stuff is going on for many months, it's a lot of effort to get to this point.
Yeah.
And you're asking now.
Would have been, no, would have been great. Would have been, what would have been really great is if you came to us in December with a really unbaked pre-submission thing, and we could have talked about all kinds of things related to how the site could be configured. We'd be asking for alternatives then too, but you would be less committed to inch-by-inch layout of the existing, of the retaining walls.
I think. I don't think we could get in front of you. We, we.
Well, then you didn't.
We're not allowed.
Well, then you didn't have a complete application.
Yeah, right. I think, I think.
We can't allow that.
Right.
Because the, the application has to be zoning compliant before it ever comes to this board, or have a variance. So, their development was to get it to be in compliance with the zoning code and the cluster development code. So, we couldn't bring him here first.
You know, I think there's a degree of detail you need, just there's so many calculations to meet the zoning code, to show, demonstrate we meet the zoning code. But, and then that sky exposure planes, which, you know, I know you're saying that's not so important anymore, but we felt it was very important, so we had to have our elevations to know how to set those up. But that's where a lot of time was spent, yes. But we do have those studies, by the way. We just haven't brought them to you. We have studies.
Come on.
You know.
I mean, Christine, you know better than anyone here, because you've been part of projects, that the zoning, when there's a project that can be made better by a zoning, by being non-compliant, and you need a recommendation to the zoning board for us to say, we, we support this variance, we do it, right? We did it on Palisade Street. We did, right? But we needed to see, but we, you know, you showed us.
Why.
Why it was necessary and what you did, and then we said, yeah, you can have X right. So, this idea that somehow, I mean, that's the other thing. It's great to talk about the code and say, talk about the letter of law for everything, but the fact of the matter is, the Village of Dobbs Ferry with all its photography and everything else, it's impossible to capture in hard and fast rules for every last piece of the plan.
True, but, you know, the process is so, it seems to be that now expectation that we need to have, show full compliance, and that takes time and effort to get there. Like, even the building on Palisades, you know, we had a scheme that wasn't what we preferred, but we made sure we did a scheme that was fully compliant before we got here.
Which was very helpful, because we could see, okay, so now, what's the difference? What are we allowing a variance for? We could see the, we had alternatives, right? We could see the difference between what was required as of right and what you wanted to do, and say, it's worth it. She convinced us. But we didn't, we didn't just, you know, we didn't have, you didn't present us with one thing and say, this is it, take it or leave it.
I, I mean, you know, I'm usually pretty flexible. But I, I just, I also have empathy for the history of this, because unfortunate, it's unfortunate, but they did have a design that was more or less about the ideas you're talking about years ago. So, for a different board, and they felt it was too big a building for the site, for the, for the location, and too dissimilar to the other buildings in the area. So, now, now we broke up the building, so now we're looking at other ideas. So, it's, it's, a lot of time has passed, and we're just trying to, I know, they're just trying to figure out what, what's the direction we're going here.
And the way to do that is to have the conversations, and to have them, in this case, with the Board of Trustees as well.
We've been, we went to one meeting with them, you know.
But I mean, we both, ultimately, both boards have to approve it, and I don't know how everybody feels. Everybody's going to agree with me.
There will be some trustees at the walkthrough, right?
You know, let me be clear. We need to do our job here, okay? And the, the natural and scenic resource protection part of the code clearly says, the visual impact of buildings and portions of buildings that can be seen shall be mitigated to the maximum extent practicable by reducing the height of the building or moving the structure to another location on the site. We haven't seen any options there. And I am a little disappointed.
Thank you, Alan, for saying that. We read that code thoroughly, our team, today, and made sure we understood it, and we're clear. But there, it, it's wide open to how you do it, yes.
That's why they hired a genius architect to do a series of site plans, to show them how it, how the skin, how the cat can be skinned.
You know, we might have listened here at the end, but we need to go to the Board of Trustees and say, we looked at every option we could think of to try and reduce the impact of blocking this gateway view to the village and to the river. And if we haven't done our homework, then we're not doing our job. So, we need your help to look at whatever options, maximize or minimize the impact to those views. We're not getting that so far.
If I could just add something on the, on the engineering. In terms of the engineering that's happened already, I think, I don't know that anything has to be re-engineered for this, for this, these looks.
Interesting you say that, Anthony, because I, I think you're correct. I mean, like, the.
Well, I, let me just finish what I have to say. The, the walls that, I know Paul is very advanced on the wall design already, which is great. And you've got a, you've got a plateau there, a platform. I think you could work with it, which is the reasonable area to develop this property. I think you could work within that and give the board, get the board to the point that you got to with the previous studies you said you've done, and get them to that point also. I think, and we're talking about schematic, we're talking about layout, we're talking about view sheds. I'm not talking about engineering. As far as, so there's zoning calculations you're going to do. There might be variances that come up with some of these layouts, but the, the board could either waive them or recommend them to be, to be approved, you know? So, I, I don't see, you know, the engineering that's gone on already, I think, is a good foundation for whatever's going to go forward. I don't see that, the, the storm water, the sewer, the water, that'll get, the details will get worked out with the final layout. That's fine, you know? It's, so I think you're, you know, you're at a good point where you could get this board to the point you got to, you know? But this board has to get there, you know, so.
So, was our next step to go see the site on Sunday?
Yes. In fact, Vic was asking, is, when we have this meeting, is the, I know that the whole board and the BOT was noticed or given or invited. Does it mean there'll be a quorum there, or we're not sure? Do, do we know who's coming? Are you all coming?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I can't speak to the BOT. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know how many people from the rural area are coming, but I do know that they were provided information.
There is a little issue in that, over the years, the trees have grown up and all, and the invasive bushes and so on, so that gateway view has been taken away from the village for the last five or six years. So, I don't know what we can see.
No.
I, by the way, Paul Petretti did tell me that he was going to paint, like, where the view corridors were, like, on the sidewalk. That'll be a help when you're out there, I guess, just to at least see where those are. But you're going to be looking at vegetation, I guess, but at least it'll be an indication, I guess, if you, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that, like, the end of, where the end of the building would be and where the driver would be, so that's something at least.
Maybe we all bring a shed over.
Yeah.
Can you get that done? Because I know it's not well. We don't have a lot of time, but I think that'd be a really good idea, because when you go there, you're going to, you're going to see that's, all of that property is on the, on the framing. Need to know where this property starts.
Right.
Yes. And where, like, where we have the view corridors now would be super helpful. And you can imagine, if you step in the site and see a bit of it, so.
In the previous scheme, I remember they had a little public triangular park on the very south corner, which was, I mean, that area being clear and, you know, with access to the public was sort of a good idea.
Yeah, I know. Adam described that to me today, and we're thinking about it, you know? So, I guess we'll see you Sunday.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Okay, we'll see you Sunday.
See you Sunday.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is 26 Belair Drive, pre-submission conference for site plan approval for proposed first floor addition to existing residents. You have anybody to present?
26 or 29?
29.
29, sorry.
I'm just going to take a second.
It's dry in here. My eyes were later, I was like, no, thank you. I understand. I was like, I'm just going to look at that earlier.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eva Buhasra. I'm an architect in Hastings. And I'm here to represent Mr. Larson and his wife for their application at 29 Belair Drive. And before I start, I would just like to take a moment and a deep breath and to say that before I lived in Hastings, I lived in Dobbs Ferry, very close to the parcel that was just discussed. And remember distinctly the great views that have always been there. And, and I appreciate what the village has done over the years to try to protect these views. And just we'll go from there. And I hope that ultimately, you know, there will be a successful development that will benefit the owners and the village residents. All right, so we come in front of you with a first story addition to a house, which is at 29 Belair Drive. The application just went to the zoning board and has received a variance for a couple of minor issues. And as you can see, the property actually stretches between Belair Drive and Magnolia Drive, Belair Drive and Magnolia. And the house can be accessed from the back and from the front. The formal entrance happens from the rear, but it does not get used because you would have to go up a very steep slope to get to that formal front door. So, the everyday access to the house happens on Belair, and there is a first floor, which has a, it's a, this is a colonial-style residence, and the house has a center hall, a living room, and a kitchen and a dining room side. And then, right now, the property works in a way where you, where you sort of walk in from Belair, and then the owners use the door leading to the living room, which also becomes an ad hoc place to sort of put down some shoes and coats and, and basic belongings, and then they proceed into the center hall and the rest of the house. So, we are proposing to extend the first floor level so that we could insert a formal mudroom, a formal entrance in the center of the house, lining up with the rear of the house. And then we give them a, a larger, more practical kitchen, and, and we gain a little bit of extra space in the living room as well. And so, in terms of elevations, this is the existing entrance to the living room. This is currently the window into a very tiny powder room, and then these are the kitchen windows. By adding onto the first floor, we're looking at a new, um, door, a new front door, which is centered on the house. And then we have the new windows into the kitchen area and the new windows in the living room. It's actually helpful to look at the sort of a 3D, which I have on the cover page, and, you know, you sort of get the sense here that we're roofing this addition with a low-slope roof that matches the existing slopes already on the house. And then we have a, a little bit of a center, sort of a peaked entrance roof, and we're using the window style, which, which matches the existing windows on the house. house. It's the same style in slightly different sizes. And then we have a couple of new windows, which are necessitated by the new powder room and sort of the projection of the peak into the existing larger staircase window, which is there right now. And so that's basically the envelope of, of the addition. And then we have prepared a side management plan. We went to Hudson Engineering to prepare drainage plans, which were reviewed by the village engineers. And we have gotten a comment, which says we will need a separate road, road opening permit. But other than that, we, we don't actually have any other comments. Should I open the planning and site storm permits as well? I mean, plans as well? In a, if we look at the drawings by Hudson Engineering, we'll see that what we're doing is we're taking the water from the roof, add it by the addition, and then we're conducting this water from the roof into a pipe. There's one little correction that needs to be made, it's connect new roof leaders instead of existing roof leaders. And so we're connecting them to a pipe, and we're taking the pipe down the hill where we have a Coltech container and with an overflow into the street drain. And this basically takes care of, of the stormwater management for, for the addition. On this plan, you can see how, you know, how steep this slope is and, and sort of understand why it's not practical for the homeowners to negotiate this route on a daily basis. Instead, they really need to be coming from, from Belair and sort of enter their house from, from the east side. Other than that, I just would like to say that this house has a rather unique situation in terms of location on the street. And I'm just going to go back here for a second. This is not actually anything that this application is trying to address or, or change. But if you look at the location of the house in the context of the street, you'll see that not only it is downslope from the houses that are on the east side, in other words, the houses that are on Buena Vista are above, right? And then the slope continues down. So the stormwater comes down from these other properties to here, which is consistent throughout their river view manner. However, there's also the situation with the water running down this street. And then because there's like a double S in the street, you can see that the water coming down here bypasses the neighbors, but then it pretty much hits these two properties here. And it brings up a whole lot of additional water onto this property, and then it kind of makes another turn, and then again it bypasses the other houses. So this house does have a, a challenge with sort of the, the street generated stormwater coming onto the property. And that's why we were extra careful to try to manage whatever additional coverage, obviously, the addition will, will bring in. And that's it.
I like that part of your drawing where you indicated the heights along the street and the setbacks. It's a really good idea.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I was, I was trying to point it out to this, you mean this part here, right?
Yeah.
I was trying to point it out to the zoning board as well, making that case that the added bulk of the first floor addition is something that will blend very easily, because this house is a little bit like a missing tooth, like a little gap in the, you know, in the height and in the setbacks, which, which means that the addition is really not going to overwhelm the neighborhood in any way at all.
Did the zoning board approve all the variances?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Great.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the, one of the issues really was that even though we needed the front variance, there's also, in the code, there's also the question of the prevailing setback.
Right, yeah.
And we were actually, we're actually far back compared to the other houses, and we're becoming more of a prevailing distance by doing the addition. So there was really basically no harm done, yes.
So this application is technically for site plan and AHRB approval, but if the board wants, you can waive site plan. Anthony doesn't have any comments, I did not have any planning board comments, so, I mean, that's up to this board, but, so.
Yeah, I think it looks great. I think it looks great.
My, my only concern is we just wanna make sure we don't need to, you know, that waving is okay, so, I know we can do it.
Waving is okay, because during the AHRB meeting, which will be right after this, we could receive public comment.
Okay, everybody's been noticed and?
Yes, all the notices have been noted, yes.
Okay.
All right.
So, so I actually, I actually gonna move that we waive the site plan for this unless anybody has any negative comments about that.
I do not.
And I move that we waive site plan with a second. Is that a poll in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and since AHRB is next, is there anyone online or here that would like to speak to the project?
Support.
If you're gonna speak, go up to the mic. Tell us who you are and where you live.
Sure, I'll give some public support for this project. Eric Larson, I live at 29 Belair Drive.
Oh, okay.
We're really excited to, you know, have actual formal mudroom to enter our house and makes parking on the street a little bit easier for us. And, yeah, it's great to see the board in action.
That's nice. David, do you wanna read the resolution?
Sure. Whereas the applicant is speaking to construct a first floor addition, the property is located at 29 Belair, Belair Drive, whereas now therefore be it resolved, the AHRB of the village of Daps Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for architectural historic review approval is granted and refers to the site plans by Hudson Engineering dated August 8th, 2025, and then also the site plans by the architect dated May 5th, 2025.
Can I make the motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Definitely approved.
Enjoy.
The next item on the agenda is 15 Lewis Avenue, pre-submission conference for site plan approval for proposed retaining walls, new patio and pergola addition. Is there anyone online? Okay.
It's also seemed to me like a no brainer.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just gonna share my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Uh, we see some.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Hello, everyone, my name is Marco Mandra, I'm the architect, architect for 15 Lewis Avenue. The proposal here is to remove an existing stone patio, install a new retaining wall with a new, larger patio, new stairs, an outdoor kitchen, and a prefabricated pergola. Just for the board's knowledge, you might, you might already know, but we did receive a variance at last month's ZBA for the impervious surface coverage calculation, since we were over that, so we did receive a variance. We also did receive the memo from the engineer. I think some of the comments are on our drawings already, but we, we do also have a separate document, which I'll just flip to real quick from Coltech. So we do have the full, I'm just gonna flip through this real quick, full design for a Coltech system, which would be the lower part of the patio, which is still gonna remain as grass. But the full design, including the patio, we have the full layout of material here, so we're looking at this, this almond grove color for the retaining wall, the slate for the main part of the stone patio, the previous pavers, and then an accent around the perimeter in this darker charcoal. The perimeter fence will be a black aluminum, six foot tall fence. As I mentioned, there's a prefabricated pergola, which will be in white. I have a whole separate submittal document from the designer of that structure, which is here. I can submit all of this as well for documentation. In terms of the stor-
Does the building, does the building department have that now?
Yeah, I believe we've submitted everything to them, they should have that, they should have the survey, that's where I was a little confused by some of the comments, so I have them here, so the pre-existing condition survey, we, we have, uh, area of disturbance, all necessary erosion sediment control, stockpile, silt fence, all of that's on the drawings. Inlet protection, construction entrance and concrete washout, we don't have. I don't think we're really gonna need a concrete washout. It's most likely, the, the most amount of concrete is gonna be, you know, this, this footing at the bottom of the wall, and then the footings for the columns, which are gonna be in sonotubes, so it's most likely you're gonna all be done by hand, and it really shouldn't be much, I mean, if there's any, probably just get placed behind the wall if there's a little bit. And then I was gonna say that the, in terms of the stormwater, we're also adding like a secondary layer of protection by adding some linear drains along the bottom, lower, lower end of the, lower elevation of the, of the patio, and all of that will be collected and then brought to the Coltech system. Coltech, the Coltech engineer is aware of all that, so they, they took all that runoff into consideration. In addition, 50% of the pavers are considered pervious, so there should be some percolation through the patio itself. I think other than that-
If I could just comment on that.
Sure.
And yeah, I'm not sure I had a Coltech design in the packet, I don't know, maybe I missed it, we'll look at it, but the Coltech engineer doesn't sign and seal it, but it has to be your design. Did you guys do perk tests?
We have not.
Okay, perk tests need to be done to substantiate that design, and the design has to follow a certain standard. Coltech kinda just does this volumetric calculation, you could do it online, or they could send it to you, but usually that's not sufficient. We could, we could look at that, we could look at what you submitted and we could talk about that. The concrete washout, you just have to add a note then to the effect that it's gonna be done by hand. And just address the other things there. You mentioned the 50% perviousness of the patio, we're gonna have to need, we're gonna need to see that substantiated, I'm not sure how you get 50%.
So, according to, according to-
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute.
Yep, go ahead, sure.
What's gonna come into play there too is you, cause you're claiming that also in your zoning calculation, the impervious area, so you need to, you need to see that, I'm not sure how you get, mostly somehow an equivalent of 50%, but do you have 50% open area on those patio pavers?
Is that a question, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, so communicating with, so we're using Unilock is the, is the product. In communication with their consultant, their product is even more pervious than 50%, but to my understanding, the town would only allow 50%. So technically, there should be more water allowed through the pavers. But from my understanding, communication with the building inspector, that the town wouldn't allow more than 50%. So we were, we're actually cutting ourselves short here, where we're actually, the pavers are supposed to allow more water to penetrate through them.
So, yeah, we're gonna need to see the spec on that, because-
Okay.
The, the idea is if you had an open area like that's grass, let's say there were open jo, the joints, let's say if they were open, could be the open area. If, if the paver themselves is pervious, I'm not sure Unilock makes something like that, it's usually through the joints. So I'm not, again, I'm not sure how you get 50% open area, and I think that's gonna be also critical to the, you know, the building department's agreement, that you would only take half of the patio impervious area in your zoning calculation as well. So, just, you have to substantiate it.
Okay, so if, for whatever reason, it's not approved, this 50%, wouldn't the linear drains collecting runoff, would that be sufficient as, as a secondary layer of defense for some, for stormwater runoff? You know, we're, we're kinda containing everything on site here.
Yeah, yeah. You're mixing up two things, there's stormwater considerations and then there's zoning calculations. The zoning calculation that you use is using half of your patio area to calculate the impervious area.
Right.
So you have to show that half of that area is grass, green space, whatever, gravel, something pervious, not a paver. So the stormwater is designed however the stormwater gets designed, you size your Coltech, the, the linear drains pick it up and it goes to the Coltechs, that's fine. You have to do perk tests to show that you can infiltrate the water. If you're doing a dry well, that has to happen, so these things have to be proven out, and I'm not, I'm just, I'm very doubtful that your paver system is 50% pervious. So I think you gotta take a close look at that.
Okay, and then in terms of the zoning table, you know, we, we, to my understanding, we received the variance, you know, regarding the impervious surface calculation being that we're over it.
Right.
So is that gets superseded if this does not?
I'm not sure, I'd have to, I defer to the building department on that, I don't know if the board has any leeway on that here, but that'll be up to the building department.
No, they received the variance for too much impervious surface.
Well, you received a variance where they took into account 50% of the patio being pervious. They only use 600 square feet when they have like 1,200 feet of patio. There's nothing that I saw that shows me that is 50% pervious in those patio pavers.
Well, he has to prove that.
Exactly.
They have to justify it.
Exactly, if you could picture like those, the old grass creep, pavers had grass growing in between, and those could be 50% open area. Pavers like this are not 50% open areas, in my, you know, it's my understanding, unless there's some kind of porous material they're using that makes it equivalent somehow, we'd have to see that.
Okay, I think I have some information from Unilock that explains that information, so I, I'll, I'll look into it and I'll, I'll provide that.
Okay, as far as moving forward, we can call for a public hearing next month if you think you're gonna be ready, you're gonna be able to address these issues with the village engineer, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, absolutely, so, just to be clear, so it's the perk test, clarifying the washout by hand, the specs for the pervious pavers, and I think that, I think that's it, right?
Just, you know, address the memo, every point of the memo, I don't wanna go through it point for point here, just each, each point in the memo should be addressed in a, in a response.
No problem.
Okay, then I move we call for a public hearing at the next meeting on October 9th. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Christina, can you keep the Zoom meeting open? And we're gonna keep the meeting open, and Rob is going to talk to us about the holistic village.
But I think though, specifically, you have to close.
We're gonna leave it open.
Oh, okay.
Change of plan.
I can just share my screen?
Is Neil Whitehead waiting outside to join you?
And, and just, just for the record, this is just a, a presentation to the planning board, just for information. We're leaving it on the meeting, well, during the meeting as opposed to on the agenda, because the, the board is here, so I'm confident you can move forward.
Sam Rob Lane, 228 Judson Avenue, and I demand that this board call for a public hearing, even though you haven't seen anything. hearing, even though you haven't seen anything, even though I haven't, just you're gonna see the first time tonight, I'd like to call for a public hearing. I've been at this for years, thinking about this, and I think I'm trying to move forward with this as it is. So anyway, as you all know, I'm, and I'm gonna try, really, I'm gonna try to do this quickly, cuz I can send a PDF to everyone, and you all can review it. It's been a preoccupation of mine that we need to look at chunks of the village holistically in the downtown. It's certainly part of that. We're doing that in the current comprehensive plan effort, which Valerie is leading, which is great. And what I decided to do was to try putting into one graphic document all of the sort of various projects that had been proposed. I wanna say, this is not my plan. In fact, most of the ideas in here, a lot of the plans, the things I'm gonna show here, didn't originate with me. That's really not the point. It's also not to be the plan. In fact, I don't really think there is a plan. This is actually meant to be the beginning of a discussion that I hope is gonna continue with the Board of Trustees and with the public as the comprehensive plan effort goes forward. So there's no action really to take, other than, you know, I'm gonna ask the Board of Trustees, when I, or the Board of, this planning board, that when I go before the Board of Trustees, which we're gonna try to do sooner than later, I can represent the spirit of the planning board and not just myself. Simultaneously, and I don't know, are you all following, I don't know if you all are following the New York Forward effort. We have a grant to do a project, the 14 potential projects. Ultimately, one will be selected. That's happening at the same time as the comprehensive plan effort. That's a little confusing in some ways, but as it happens, they're completely aligned in terms of what they're trying to accomplish. They're also shown in this presentation. I actually color-coded them so that, just to help us all keep track of the ones that are New York Forward and ideas that have come from others. The idea is to just redraw, in a lot of cases, I've taken things that other people have done and redrawn them in my hand, only so that they all look of a piece, and it's easier to kinda put together in our heads. So, so this is sort of the, at the moment, and this will change as we fill in other parts of it. This is the whole downtown represented as if some, all the various things that I'm about, about to present in pieces were actually put together. But there are a couple of really big ideas that people have always talked about that are really important. The idea of getting all the way from the gateway to the waterfront to ensure the continuity of the Quoten Aqueduct. As it goes through town, Dobbs Ferry is kinda blessed with this very unusual condition of having the aqueduct parallel to Main Street, we're the only village that has that. To create an attractive pedestrian experience along the length of Cedar and Main Street, and to link ultimately to the Hudson River Greenway. So starting, I'm gonna do this in two pieces. In the top half, because it's such a long and extended downtown, I'm gonna deal with Cedar Street first, and then I'm gonna go to the rest of the downtown. So on this drawing, you see a bunch of things, some of which will be explained when I get to down below. It shows the New York DOT proposed roundabout pedestrian improvements. We have no idea if that's actually gonna happen. This is what it would look like in the plan. Their DOT proposed pedestrian improvements for the intersection of Route 9 and Cedar Street. One of the New York Forward projects, which is in blue here, is Cedar Street's streetscape, which would includes a bunch of things we think. Right now, the New York State consultant is actually scoping this out. I'm assuming it'll have the usual suspects of distinctive paving, street trees, lighting to clean up or bury the overhead wires is a very long-term idea, but one that should always be in play. By the way, some of the ideas here are things that we could do tomorrow. Some of them are things that may never happen, or maybe they'll take 20 years to happen. And the, and the idea of, and the idea of improved bus stops, which is something that's gonna be in the comprehensive plan. Also shown here, there's a proposal to revitalize Pickrick Theater, so I circled that in blue. You can see the two infill sites where there ultimately may be affordable housing, if that works out. It's not clear yet, but certainly having sidewalk-oriented infill development. And then, and this is a place where, one of the values of this exercise, I think, you know, we're getting ready to put a bid in for the Cedar Street streetscaping, and for me, part of that should be the articulation of crossing the old Quoten Aqueduct as it crosses Cedar Street. So if the idea is to have a continuous experience of the Quoten Aqueduct, then when we get to that place, that should be really something that is articulated. And also, and I'm gonna describe this in more detail, is the idea, it's also a New York Forward project, of doing something with that public space that is at the intersection between Cedar and Main. So now the lower part of downtown. And again, the, you can see the sort of list of the sort of key big ideas on the right about ensuring the continuity of the Quoten Aqueduct and linking ultimately to the waterfront. There are kinda two big ideas here that have many smaller ideas in them. One is to sort of really think of the aqueduct as sort of Dobbs Ferry's central park, and it's something that should really be celebrated for the entire length of the downtown as shown in this drawing, including the connections from it to the, to Main Street, so that you're always aware of the connection between Main Street and the aqueduct. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about Dobbs Ferry's other waterfront park, the part that is east of the tracks, where there are also some New York Forward projects and where there are some real opportunities. So I'm gonna start from the south and work my way north. At the south end of the aqueduct, there has been a proposal that's floated around, although I probably, I missed sort of hearing about it, that someone said, well, Nile, Neil, and others have been rethinking a little campus of things that happens where the Keeper's House is. And again, this campus, if we call it that, would have some more set of components, really well-articulated crossing for where you cross, where the aqueduct crosses the street. It proposes rebuilding and re, you know, getting rid of that trailer that's there and providing much more attractive facilities for the maintenance vehicles. The biggest piece, shown in elevation on the left, is to take the barn and really rehab it as a mixed-use space that would have meeting rooms, would have art lab space, could be a wonderful mixed-use opportunity. So that's at the south end. Then the other components of this idea is, you can see in the key plan on the bottom, this idea of everywhere where the aqueduct crosses a cross street, that it is articulated in some way, shown in that detail, number three. And then when you get to a place in the aqueduct where there's some important civic institution, you know, relatively close or adjacent to the aqueduct, that should really be articulated in some way. So when we think about streetscape, it's not just a matter of like what happens along Cedar and Main, but what happens linking the aqueduct to Main Street. And then we have the difficult situation shown in the far left, where the aqueduct has to make its way across this parking lot, and, and the next parking lot before you get to, it should be a real crossing. In there, I'm proposing that are suggesting, I think others have probably come up with this idea, that it should really have a kind of distinctive paving and landscaping treatment. So even though cars can technically go on it, there's something about the way it's designed that signals that this is a pedestrian place, pedestrian experience. In, in Holland, these are called the werners, so these so-called shared streets, where there's, they're meant for cars and people, everything moves slowly enough so that they can be intermingled. Another idea that is part of New York Forward is this idea of identifying places for community gardens. And I asked them, I said, I'm doing this plan, are there places in downtown? There are three areas that they're thinking of. One is shown in detail three, and that's that sloped lawn, which is part of the aqueduct and west of the Keeper's House. There is already, I think, an informal one that's been started at the rear of 249 Broadway. And then also, the first one on the left, again, identified by that box in the key plan, to use part of the property of the historic society. Could be a place where there could also be community garden. And then lastly, there's the place where the aqueduct reaches Cedar Street. And there are a couple of ideas here. One, as already mentioned, is this idea there being a really distinct paving moment where the aqueduct crosses Cedar Street. And this is, by the way, some, these are not all my ideas. This is actually Steve, a sketch that Steve Tilly did that I kind of redrew in here that I really like. And in this scheme, the idea is that there is, rather than having to leave the aqueduct and find the ramp that is in that weird public space that there is now, that there would be another ramp to the, to the east that would take you there. And the existing ramp would be reconfigured so that a real, well-designed public space could be created at the end, at the end access of Main Street. And I have to say, this is also one of the New York Forward proposals, although I would argue that the design is not nearly adequate in terms of addressing what should happen at one of the most important intersections in Dobbs Ferry. And this is again, a place where looking at everything holistically makes you think about what, how this space might be better designed. Also, in New York Forward, and I think this is also a very good project personally, there's a proposal to redo the plaza in front of the library. And there are several really interesting ideas here. I think one is, we're gonna take a few parking spaces and create this kind of wave-shaped little linear park, building a trellis over that open space to help define it. And then the key thing shown in their rendering is to really open up that community space in that bottom corner so that it opens up both Main Street and the plaza. And so now, I wanna talk about Memorial. Now we're down to getting to the waterfront and to Memorial Park. And I think it's worth thinking about Memorial Park as sort of upper Memorial Park and lower Memorial Park. In upper Memorial Park, there are a couple of things, well, there are a bunch of things going on in Memorial Park that I think can be really made much better. One of them is that a lot of the landscaping, a lot of the trees there, at least the trees that are really not, non, that are not specimen trees, could be removed to open up views. They're actually incredible views from that little spot where they've hung, if you like peek through the trees. And there's also, there's more level area to the west for the upper park there, where you see the number one. And so I think it's possible to extend the level part, or more or less level part of Memorial Park up there, and to extend the trail network. Right now, you have that one ramp stair that brings you up, but if you look at the topography, it's possible, doesn't, wouldn't handicap code, certainly, or accessibility code, but it is possible to have a similarly shaped, or maybe it is, I don't know, that would be something to consider, is whether or not it's possible to do handicapped extent, extension that would wrap around to a trail that would go along the edge, the west edge of Memorial Park, and ultimately connect to 145 Palisade Street. There's also a level area down where that little oval, or through that little oval in, there's a further level area, if you look at the topography, that's the north end of the ball field. These are all places that could ultimately be recaptured in a grander idea of what Memorial Park would be. And then when you get down to the, closer to the train station, this is where there is a New York Forward proposal to take the VFW site, which as you know, is now, you know, derelict, the building's gone, nothing is happening there. On the left is one of the proposals that is being currently considered, which includes a new public space and two new pickleball courts. And I think that there really should be several alternatives for this site that are considered. And the one that I'm showing here, which has the same kit of parts, suggesting that the pickleball courts be put side by side with the basketball court, so that all the active recreation is in one place. And then for the open space to be a series of step platforms that tie all the way back to the train station. I think that the key thing about this site is not just how many pickleball courts we can fit in, but this is one of the gateways to all of Dobbs Ferry. And when you get off the train station there, there should be some kind of public space that takes you, that's the beginning of a procession to other public spaces, to Memorial Park, and you'll see in a moment, I'm suggesting also to the park that is to the south here. Sorry, I'm gonna move on with it. And that brings us to another New York Forward project, which is what to do with High Street Park. High Street Park, which I've walked through for my whole working life, there is actually, covered in vines, a kind of level area, small concrete level area, that I guess had benches on it at the moment. There is a proposal in New York Forward to sort of, I guess, expand that a little bit and clean it up. This is a much more ambitious proposal because it suggests actually building a larger garden area. I don't know if it'll end up being a community garden, but building a much larger area there and using the topography to make it possible to move along the park. Now, as you all know, because of the collapsing wall, Palisade Street at the moment is only one-way, and it seems to be working fine. And so in this sketch, it continues to be one-way. Space on the street is used to create a much more robust walkway. And again, as with Memorial Park, clearing out enough of the vegetation so that there could be viewpoints from there out onto the river. And you see in these red dashed lines, the potential for these other connections, including back to the train station and ultimately along the rest of waterfront. And lastly, the, which has been talked about for many years, what to do at 145 Palisade where it meets the waterfront. And this is a very generic idea that I think captures some of the things that have been thrown around over the years. Connecting it by, in terms of roadways, from the north end of the parking lot, parallel to the tracks and under the existing bridge. As you know, the existing bridge needs to be rebuilt, which is gonna be very expensive. In this scheme, I'm suggesting that maybe in the immediate term, it is just refurbished enough to work as a pedestrian bridge or for emergency access only. The parking can be, and the building itself can be raised out of the floodplain. You can park under the building in the floodplain, but you can also level, you know, build up the landscape so that some kind of new commercial or institutional mixed-use building is there. There could be an extension of park place, of a park space, maybe another boat landing. And again, the dashed black line in this case, the continuation of the waterfront park walkway over to where the Wickers Creek Bridge is. And so again, just back to this overall plan that I just kind of broke down into pieces. So that's, that's the, I guess what I, what I'm interested in, first of all, to the extent you have the energy now, I thought we'd be doing this earlier, your thoughts? You don't have to, you can give whatever thoughts you wanna give to me now, and then in addition, give me additional thoughts after this, after you've had a chance, I'll distribute it, after you've had a chance to digest it. And as I said, it's meant to be a work in process, like if there's some idea. Now, of course, you can't see policy on here, right? Like downtown fairs or whatever to promote business, that doesn't show it. This is with a planning board, so this is about things that have some physical manifestation on the ground. But anything that you all can think of, or there's an alternative that you've thought about for one of these things, this plan is set up in such a way that I can plug in and out alternatives, and you can look at, see what that looks like. And that's meant to be the value of it over the long term. So that's it.
There used to be a stairway right down, they closed it, cuz it's-
Right, I used that. That staircase was some- Right. I used that. That staircase was something
Yeah, because I remember.
That I walked up and down.
Right. I remember using that.
And actually, this line corresponds more or less to where that staircase is. And it's a little, you can bear, it's worth jumping this fence here, but a little
There used to be a lot of cats over there.
That whole area here. And in the New York Forward scheme, there is an idea that
That's nice, yeah.
But, um, it, it would be interesting if we're going to rebuild this wall anyway. But thinking about whether or not there are opportunities for these views.
I like the one-way there.
From here. Yeah, I mean, it seems to be working, but who knows? I mean, you know, these are all, that idea, some of which are, I think, straightforward, some of which are more complex. So, um, and I think, like I said, it, this doesn't have any formal status yet. It may be by the time we get to the end of it, there'll be an urban design or downtown design supplement to the comp plan, and that'll be different than this. This is just an ongoing.
Who owns the waterfront behind Palisade? Is that part of Palisade or is that, um, you know, the...
Where the buildings are now?
Yeah, like, yeah, where the
That's part of Palisade.
So that they own that property to the waterfront?
Wait, which piece you're talking about?
Um, you know
Over the bridge.
On the riverside of the bridge.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, uh, that's owned by, that's owned by the property owners of 145.
Those are property, those, those not village.
No, no.
Yeah.
No, that's High Street you're
So you know where the soccer field is and then you can go through the fence there and you can walk down.
He's talking about 145 Palisade.
That's what I used to do. I used to take my dogs down there.
Yeah, no, that's, um, that, they cleared that whole area. Right.
The corporation owns the building.
Oh, okay.
This, this isn't all owned, isn't this all owned by 145 Palisade?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all owned by them.
So there would have to be some
So they would have to be on board.
Agreement.
Yeah.
Agreement or deal with them, you build park, let you do something.
Don't worry, they'll come back with an agreement to use the village parking lot as an entrance to get to that area, so.
But, but the problem was that they couldn't get, can't get the fire truck around that corner, by the corner of the building in 145 Palisade, it's where the wall is.
Right.
So
They can't get a ladder truck, right?
You can't get a ladder truck around there, so.
But is there, and there can't be emergency access, it's good, like, around that area?
No, on the, on the west side of the tracks, that corner that goes around the, the
Around the building itself.
The
To get onto the little bridge.
The 145 Palisade's building itself.
Right.
On the east side.
Yeah, but he, but Rob's saying that they, you could make it access from the parking lot, from the train station parking lot.
Oh, right, yeah.
And it's been discussed before. I know it's come up in front of us
You can, yeah.
With some other project at some point.
So how does, how does that happen?
I don't know.
So next to the soccer field, you know.
No, what do you mean? Does the planning board just give you access there? I mean, how's that happen?
No, I think it would have to be the village board would have to grant access.
Yeah.
Next to the soccer field, woods, for about 15 feet is village property.
Right.
Before the MTA property.
Right.
Right, wow.
So that could become
Yes.
A driveway to the lower portion of 145. And trade off for a trail through 145.
Yes, that's good. Yeah, trade, trade offs are good.
Right?
So this has a lot of moving parts. I mean, you've got the New York Forward parts, some of which you like and some of which you think could be a little better. Obviously, uh, Trustee Patino feels the same way. He just was here supporting you with this. Got some other smart people working on this. Um, so I guess, you know, where, where do we go? Do we go anywhere from here? Do we take a little time? Do we think about it? You, you're asking for our support.
I'm, I'm asking for your support, but only to, uh, to continue the discussion with the Board of Trustees. Like, there's nothing really to approve, other than the approach, the idea that we should be discussing the downtown in this holistic way. So my next step would be to go to the Board of Trustees. Maybe it's a joint, maybe it's one of those things where we do a joint. We do a joint workshop, uh, print out some giant versions of that map. And we'll sit around and we'll comment. Maybe people will want to draw alternatives. I'm good at doing that quickly, so. It's, it's, the only thing I'm really looking for is, uh, the endorsement when I go to the planning board, uh, the Board of Trustees and ask them to start the discussion that the planning board is interested in opening up this discussion and
Right. Just, just to be clear, I think the, I would foresee the path going forward is that members individually can provide comments to Rob and, and his group just to give ideas of, of not the planning board's view, but your individual views as planning board members, um, and get those to Rob. I, I, I don't think the boards, I don't think the planning board would be in a position to approve anything. There's nothing to approve yet, uh, or, or adopt a, a, a board-wide decision. But again, I think it's the input is that it's critical at this point and would be very helpful. So I think, you know, after reviewing this and Rob's presentation, um, maybe comments would be the, you know, provided by the members.
Yeah, including saying, I don't like that idea. You know, like I, I'll give you all the PowerPoint and say, I don't, you know, I have another idea for this, or I really don't support it. It's like, it doesn't matter, like to me, I'm just trying to
Get the information out.
Follow the discussion graphically.
That's cool.
So.
No, I don't like the holistic view versus piecemealing, you know, I, I think that idea is good. But isn't this really a, um, sort of a vision plan?
Yeah, I mean, it's a vision, it's vision, it's a vision of what the, I mean, so is the comp plan. I mean, the comp plan also is going to say
Will the comp, yeah.
You know, it, it has, it's meant to be forward-looking and have things that are both easy and things that are more, you know, visionary. Maybe some of it will suggest ideas that will end up in the, in the comprehensive plan or the zoning in some way. Maybe some will never make it and this will just live as a, you know, as another set of ideas.
Well, thank you. It was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, like I said, the idea is to sort of stimulate people into thinking about it and giving me comments.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
All right, uh, I move that we close the meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks everyone.
Better use the gabber.